For which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to approval of agenda. We are, we need a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
If no further discussion on the agenda, Sandra, we call the roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. So, the next action, 2.03, is to approve minutes from the last meeting. The recommended action is I move the board approved minutes, meeting minutes as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? If not, Sandra?
Angie?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. That takes 2.04 in honoring excellence. Dallas?
Good evening, everyone. If you have been following us the last month to two months, you've probably seen many celebrations from the area of fine arts. It has been an unbelievable run here over the course of this semester and beyond, obviously. We've always had such a strong fine arts department, but this month, I thought I would bring in the man that has been leading the fine arts department. That would be the Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Aaron Money. He is going to highlight some of the celebrations that you have hopefully seen over the course of the last several weeks. And he brought with him several students, several awesome staff members that he will introduce as well here this evening. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Money.
Thank you, Dallas. Okay, I wrote it all out because I didn't want to mess anything up. And sometimes up here, you know, you get a little nervous. So, thank you for having us come here tonight. It's been an exciting time for the fine arts department, and I know there's more exciting news for the end of the year. I'm grateful that Dallas asked me to come today to speak about the most recent accomplishments of the fine arts department. First, on March 11th, elementary schools participated in the Missouri Fine Arts Education Day in Jefferson City. This day is a day of advocacy for fine arts in our schools at the Capitol, hosted by the Missouri Arts Council. Schools applied to perform for the event in the Capitol Rotunda. Kelly Brook, Shoal Creek, Lewiston Clark, and Ridgeview Elementary Choirs were accepted to participate in this honor. This was our first time to participate at this event, and we had over 220 4th grade and 5th grade students. It was awesome and a little scary, but it was great to see that many kids be able to go to the Capitol, and some of them have never been there before. It was amazing. We worked with the House Representatives, Nick King, TJ Berry, and Myron Neff, and all of which helped us organize a tour of the Capitol, and we met with representatives. Some of the times through there, the kids were like, "Who are all these people that keep talking to us?" Like, "They're people that make laws." So it was a great cross-curricular experience for the students, and they gave a heartwarming performance in the beautiful Rotunda at the Capitol to an audience of representatives, patrons, and others. Second, during this time, Dr. Mary Lou Jones was diligently preparing chamber orchestra to go to the American String Teachers Association National Conference in Salt Lake City, Utah. The ASTA Conference, or NASTA, as I call it because it's the National Association, is a professional organization for strings educators from around the country. Chamber Orchestra sent in an audition tape, that's what they call it even though it's CDs now, last year, and was accepted to perform at the national conference. While they performed at the national conference for teachers, music merchants, and others around the country, they hold clinics for performers as well as rank the performances with first and second places based on the division of high school or middle school. Out of the six high schools that were accepted to perform at the convention, Liberty High School was named first place for the high school division. Dr. Jones discusses continuously with me and her students how they need to have mountaintop experiences while they are in school, and this was definitely a mountaintop experience for the students, and ironically, it happened while we were in the mountaintops in Salt Lake City. The dedication, passion, and the commitment to excellence was evident in their performance. Tonight, we have some students as well as Dr. Jones that will be here, so if you guys can come forward. I asked them to bring their trophies because we had to get these across the country in a plane, and Mrs. Davis and I sat in a room for an hour with bubble wrap, wrapping these trophies up, and we got them here successfully. But I want to acknowledge them now before we go to our next one, so if you can help me with a round of applause for these. Now, while we were at Salt Lake City, it seemed to be that two weeks was just continuous, continuously going. I received more exciting news. Liberty Public Schools was designated for the third year in a row as a Best Communities for Music Education by the NAM Foundation, National Association for Music Merchants. The Best Communities for Music Education designation acknowledges teachers, community, board members, parents, and students for the commitment to and the support of the music education. The designation is based on funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instructional time, support of the music program, and other factors in the community that affect access to music education for all students. In the end, more than 2,000 districts requested this designation, but only 388 were selected as a best community. Most recently, a study showed that there is a direct relationship between music programs and academic success, such as reading, confidence, social skills, teamwork, solving problems, and communication, all of which are the soft skills that we prepare our students for college and careers. At this time, I would like to invite all the teachers or students that are present tonight to join up here. Fine arts teachers, come on up. I have the honor and the privilege to be the spokesperson for the fine arts department. However, the teachers, students, parents, and the community are the deserving of the praise. They work day in and day out to better equip the LPS students with life experiences, implementing the rigorous curriculum and continuously striving for excellence in the arts at LPS. I look at this as not just for music education, but also for fine arts as a whole. It takes a whole team to get this going, and I work every day with an amazing team of teachers that really do care about what the students do and how they succeed. Through the Best Communities acknowledgment, I was asked what makes LPS so different from others, places in the community, and for me, it was an easy question. The support from the top, the Board of Education, the ELT, the DLT, it sounds like I'm making a sandwich, and cabinet members, and everybody else, all the way through the bottom, and the teachers. We have the best of the best. I can't say it enough. That's one of the reasons I wanted to be in Liberty, and that's why so many people want to be here. The teachers don't stop when the school day is done. They are continually working to better students, and they truly believe that this is where kids find their voice, and they want to mold them into a good, abiding citizens through music and through arts. To conclude, I also want to specifically thank all of you. You have continuously supported the fine arts program and allowed us to be able to grow and build the program to where it is today, so we thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for acknowledging tonight, and thank you for your support. And tonight, we have a certificate that Dallas just gave me that is awarded to the Fine Arts Department for recognition for honoring excellence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Money. You guys can be seated. And before I conclude, just want to let everybody know, to tease next month's meeting, we will have some employee recognitions, as we are hoping to be joined by not only the Support Employee of the Year representing the school district in the next school year, but also the Teacher of the Year for 2015 moving toward 2016. So we will look forward to that, and I appreciate everyone's time this evening, and that concludes my portion of honoring excellence.
Yeah, we've got a little bit more to do here tonight, but before we get to our next piece, I, when I'm writing something or speaking on behalf of the district, I'm often given these facts and these awards and stuff, and I'm always making sure I heard them right and getting them written down correctly, and I'm going, "Top orchestra in the nation? In the nation?" And people are going, "Yes, top orchestra." I'm going, "The United States of America, really?" People are going, "Yes." So, we have a tradition here of giving our state champions and our state finalists a standing ovation. I think top orchestra in the nation deserves a standing ovation too, so please join me in doing that. A couple of years ago, when I spoke at graduation, I said that the orchestra sounded just like the one that I heard on Broadway doing the Phantom of the Opera. Remember that a couple of years ago? And they really did. They were really awesome.
You're so kind, but I'm going to tell you that this year, this is my last year, and we are doing graduation, and to time of retiring, I can do anything I want.
Again this year. Awesome. Good. Okay, we have one more excellent person to honor tonight, and that is one of our own. Charlene Armitage is going to be leaving us after, how many years on the board?
Six.
Six years on the board. She chose not to run this year. She's got grandkids and family to take care of, and lots ahead of her, I think, in other avenues of her life. But I do want to tell you that, you know, we, sometimes we have hard decisions to make. Some months are easier than others, but through this whole thing, and I'm going to date myself a little bit, how many of you remember the old EF Hutton commercials? Do you remember the old EF Hutton commercials, the taglines where when EF Hutton talks, everybody listens? I always likened Charlene to EF Hutton on our board, because we would be talking back and forth about some things. There'd be some crosstalk at times, and, but when Charlene speaks, everybody paid attention. And I think that that's probably been that way for a long time, and not just on the school board, right? Your husband feels that way, right? But I wanted to thank her for her six years of service on the board. This has been a very busy six years, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure we'd be here in every facet of our district without her, without her, kind of her informal leadership that she brings to us every, every couple of weeks or every month, so thank you.
He has said most everything I told him to say.
Would you like to say if you could?
I'd like to respond to that, yeah.
Please do.
Because I've had several people ask me why I didn't run, and no particular specific reason, except I felt like I was in the right place, at the right time, for the right reason, and a very, kind of a purpose-driven kind of person, and I just had a sense that I wasn't supposed to. And then, when the person who said that she was going to run, I thought, "Ah, that's such a confirmation." But then the second piece that I wanted to mention is, it has been an exceptional privilege to work on the board, and the two big pieces that I think has been exception, I wish you could be in a, had there been a hidden camera enclosed session, but I guess that wouldn't work. But the skill set that is on the board now and the interaction that they bring, it's just, it's amazing. No, there's, no, I don't think there's an "uh-huh" person on the board. Lots of questions asked at the right time, the right place, and Scott's done a great job of leading us as a Board of Education. So I just wanted to share that, but it's been, it's been a real privilege to serve on the board.
Well, we thank you, and on behalf of the entire community, thank you for this past year, so. Okay, tonight's meeting. I know what this is. Nobody told me that was down there, though.
You know what it is?
Yes. Would you like to take it out? It's a what?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollar gift certificate. No, it's not a thousand. This is petition for our retiring staff and for the board members that roll off. You know it. It's your Liberty Bell.
Wait, you did it a little bit too soon.
We do have a lot of performers in the room. Yes, that's right.
Oh, that's very nice. Very nice. A little stamp to put the Liberty Bell on. Is that what you're saying there?
I think so.
Oh, now the, oh, right.
They're really green.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Tonight's meeting is a little different. We, this is our reorganization meeting. It's once a year where we say goodbye to the people who may be rolling off the board. We're going to say hello to Eileen Houston Stewart, who will be selected as a new member of the board. So at this time, we're going to adjourn senior DA, and we would like to ask that everybody stick around. We would like to give the orchestra and the fine arts teachers and the students that are here, shake a few hands, say goodbye to Charlene. I looked back there at that trophy. I thought maybe that was for you when I first saw it, and I thought, "Wow, they've really gone overboard here." Before we adjourn, before we take a break here, if anybody would like to address the board during the public comment portion of the meeting, there are blue cards right outside the door. Please fill those out and get them to somebody up here, and we'll get you to the podium at the right time. So, at this point, let's, let's take a break till right 7:30. Okay, we will reconvene at this time, and first thing on this part of the agenda is the administration of the oath of office to our new and remaining board members. So if you would.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of school director.
Of school director.
In and for the Liberty School 53 School District.
In and for the Liberty 53 School District.
County of Clay.
County of Clay.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law.
Okay, welcome back, David Evans, and welcome to the board, Ms. Eileen Houston Stewart. At this time, we will go into the election of officers, and I'm going to turn the gavel, which I don't have, over to Dr. Tucker, and let him run this portion of the meeting.
Symbolic gavel. The first order of business under reorganization is the election of president for the Board of Education as newly reorganized, and so at this point, we'll open up the floor for nominations for the position of president of the Liberty Public Schools Board of Education.
I would nominate David Evans to take over as president of the board. Nomination, do not need a second.
Correct. Any additional nominations for the position of board president? Okay. Seeing none, having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to elect David Evans as president by acclamation?
So moved.
Okay. We have a second? Okay, seconded by Andy Rothman. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Evans, and thank you to Mr. Connor for his service in this capacity. For how many years now?
Three.
Three years. Thank you very much. The next position, then, up for election and for nominations would be the position of vice president of the Liberty Public Schools Board of Education. Do we have any nominations for this position from the board?
I nominate Andy Rothman.
Okay. Do we have any additional nominations? Okay. As per our vacancy for the president's position, having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to elect Andy Rothman as vice president by acclamation?
So moved.
Moved by Scott Connor, seconded by Kim Marie. Okay. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll now turn the remainder of the meeting over to our newly elected president, Mr. David Evans.
All right, we are at the part of the meeting where we need to appoint the board treasurer, and in the past, the last year, that has been Cindy Sullivan. I assume that you will accept that duty if requested.
I will.
All right. Good motion to that effect? So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, would you call roll?
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Sandra, you seem to be already serving in the capacity as the secretary. Would you be able to serve in the capacity going forward?
I will.
Great. Great. Motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Eileen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. President, would you like to change seats?
Move around. She asked me to, she told me I had to do this, so.
Physical change.
Thank you.
As long as she's okay with it in line.
Is it okay with Sandra? Because if it's not, you're going to have to.
Is it okay with Sandra?
You may.
All right, we are at the point in the meeting where we have public comment, and I do have three cards here for people who wanted to speak. The first person is going to be Karen Blankenship, and while she's coming up, I want to just go ahead and come on up to the podium. People addressing the board will be asked to not repeat what somebody before has said. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education may do so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. So, Karen?
Good evening. My name is Karen Blankenship, and I am a best driver for Liberty Public Schools, and I also have my fellow drivers and monitors here with me tonight. We come to you tonight to talk about a situation that has become highly talked about in the Transportation Department. So this is what I'd like to say. Thank you to the Liberty School Board for allowing me to speak on behalf of the 115 school bus drivers and bus monitors in our district. On a daily basis, approximately 7,000 students of the 12,196 students within our district are transported to and from school and other school-sponsored activities. As a driver, it is our responsibility to perform our duties safely and in a timely manner. Every morning, we start off with inspecting the bus we drive to ensure its safety for transporting our precious cargo. Lights, tires, turn signals, emergency windows and doors, safety roof hatches are all inspected. We pick up children at bus stops in all kinds of weather and watch their neighborhoods as another set of eyes to ensure their safety. Personally, I have reported suspicious activity to the school district, all in the name of caring for my students. I call them my children, as do many other bus drivers. We care about these kids as if they are our own. We know when they are upset and laugh with them when they are happy and excited. When things don't go well on the bus, we have to discipline and make others aware of the situations. Not only is their safety our concern, but so is their emotional well-being. We are the first school district employees these kids see every day, and we have the ability to either set their day off right or to assess for a potential problem. We do these things because bus driving is not a job. It is our livelihood, and these kids are special. We volunteer to work extra, to escort kids to after-school programs, shuttle programs, and from school-to-school field trips and sporting events. Yes, we have advantage, we have advantages by doing this work. We get to see our district's kids in a new light. For the past five years, the bus drivers and monitors have not seen a change in the pay scale. We are the lowest-paying school district in the Kansas City area for districts similar to ours. North Kansas City, Grandview, and Blue Springs start their drivers at approximately $14 an hour. Raytown and Lee Summit at approximately $13.90 an hour, and Fort Osage and Independence at $13.50 and $13.40 respectively. Their starting pay for a Liberty driver is $13.29 an hour. Unfortunately, our drivers know this information, and the district has had a climbing turnover rate since 2011, 2012, to 2015, from 25% to 45%. Turnover rates that high should be assessed and reviewed by the district.
Karen, are you about done?
Yes, I'm about done.
Thank you.
Surveys performed by Evergreen in the past ask questions of bus drivers and monitors that do not pertain to the kind of work a driver performs. I do not know of a single bus driver who works at a computer or has a district credit card for use. All questions were on the survey. We ask at the school board table the compensation study until all board members have reviewed and studied the information provided. Many a driver worry day in and day out about our kids, but yes, they have to worry about their families too. For some, this is the only income for our families. To go without a change in the pay scale for five years is not to be expected in this day and age. We understand the struggles school districts face with teacher pay, curriculum changes, and building upkeep, to mention just a few, but we do ask for your consideration during budget development to consider those who provide district transportation for those that allow all of us to have a job and purpose, the children of Liberty Public School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
I do have a packet of information that I would like to hand out to the board members if possible.
Sure. Paul Smith, I think you're up next. Sir?
Mr. President and board members, Superintendent Dr. Tucker, others that are here, and those that are in the gallery. My name is Steve Smith, and I have been a member or a resident of the Liberty School District for over 10 years. I want to applaud the Liberty Girls' basketball team for their rewarding season. However, when I saw their picture in the paper, I was disappointed. No, I was really appalled. I noticed in the picture the overwhelming I noticed in the picture the overwhelming number of male coaches for this female team. The last I looked, we are living in the 21st century. Why does this district, or any district for that matter, still have male coaches for female athletes? Does this mean there are no competent female coaches available? Or does this district promote subtle sexism through their system of sports? Does this mean this district does not believe that women are capable of being successful coaches? Then why? My daughter was educated in a nearby district in her years of high school, in her career in volleyball, basketball, cheerleading, and softball. She only had two female coaches, one in volleyball her freshman year and in cheerleading her final three years. In her university, she walked on her university softball team, and her last two years she was scholarship. However, once again, she had a male coach. Today, she is a wonderful teacher in a nearby district. She was one of eight finalists for the Teacher of the Year in Kansas in 2014. I wonder how much more successful she might have been if a female role model has a coach as she was growing up. Currently, she is a coach and a role model for young women in several sports in the middle school where she teaches. Therefore, I would employ, I would encourage, I would appeal to this board, the superintendent, the athletic director, and all the principals to begin to actively seek out and to recruit female coaches for all female sports in this district. I would ask that female coaches be aggressively recruited, and by the year 2020, Liberty School District will have female coaches for all their female athletes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Sorry, I got the wrong name there on the, reading off the card.
No, that's my first name, so.
Got it. Danette Lemmons, is that correct?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Danette Lemmons. I work for Transportation. And I wanted to recognize Anno and Laura for the great job they've done this year. They lost a mechanic and still was number one almost in their fleet when they did the inspections. They have, like, I don't want to repeat, but we've had a lot of turnover, a lot of deaths and such, and there's been a lot going on, and I just wanted to recognize them for the great job they do. I mean, they're out there, they got the office out there driving halftime. They do a great job, and they need to be recognized as well, I think, if they're what hold up this school district, I think. And Anno, he's doing pretty good. So is Laura. Laura's there, she's for you. She's there for you. And I wanted to recognize them and tell them thank you for the great job they've done.
Great, thank you. All right, before we move on, was there anybody else that had a blue card that I missed? All right. Then the next portion of the agenda is the consent agenda. We have financial, operational, and HR topics on consent. I believe those are sections 4.01 through 7.03.
5.01.
Oh, you're right. 5.01 through 7.03. We have a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
There is something I'm supposed to read. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Seconds. Any discussion? If not, Sandra, we call roll.
Angie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have unfinished business. Item 8.01 is the 2015-16 district compensation plans.
Yeah, the first item is a carryover of recommendations provided to the Board of Education regarding the next fiscal year. Couple of items I'm presenting this evening. One is to recommend the salary schedule allowing for both vertical and horizontal movement for eligible employees in the 2015-16 school year. Addition to that would be recommending those that experienced prior salary freezes in 2009 to 2010, as well as the subsequent year 2010, 2011, that that be applied to them at the time of hire and given an additional half a step increase in the 2015-2016 year in terms of recouping that additional half a step. The third recommendation this evening is to focus on the Evergreen study, specifically the classified staff salary study recommendations that were found to be furthest behind market in regard to external and/or internal equity up to a dollar amount or up to a ceiling of $375,000. In addition, in your board packet this evening, you have a breakdown of the fiscal impact to the anticipated costs as it relates to the step increase for all staff, horizontal education movement for teachers, and then again, those that are recouping the half a step from the frozen years and rolling into the 2015-2016 school year, looking at the positions addressed by the compensation study, and then looking at the anticipated expenditure related to recurring costs of salary and benefits for next year. Couple that with the benefits increase that was approved by the Board of Education earlier in the year, and then retirement added to that for a grand total fiscal note for 2015-16 to the tune of $3,081,458 in looking toward next year. As you'll recall, in March, we looked at the revenue anticipated stream for next year, looking this month as expenditures and that being fold in to our forecasting projections and looking ahead. So we'll not only see the impact fiscally for next year, but note that that cost does not go away, and in fact, it adds to it each year as you apply retirement benefit and salary increases to that, so you can project out what that anticipated fiscal forecast looks like. Appreciate the comments that were shared this evening. Would still put forth, this is our recommendation moving forward, and also provide opportunity for further study into the concerns brought forward by the Transportation Department. If need be, being able to bring data back to this table either in our study session or in a retreat setting to look a little bit deeper into some of their concerns. Those are our recommendations this evening. I do appreciate Dr. Vogelar, as well as Cindy Sullivan's help around these items in terms of putting the numbers to paper, as well as looking out to the future of Liberty Public Schools on a fiscal standpoint.
And it's my understanding that there are some roles in the Transportation Department that have been on the review that will fit under the Evergreen adjustment.
That would fall within that $375,000.
Other roles that they've expressed concern about that. So quite a few line items there, but these are items that we have been discussing over the past months.
Yeah, and as part of that recommendation, you'll also note the salary schedules that are included, and so the only one that's excluded at this point would be the administrator's salary recommendations and that schedule, and that is vetted via part of our Salary and Welfare Committee, our Administrator's Salary and Welfare Committee. They're still in process in bringing forth their recommendations, so that will come at a later time. You'll likely see that in our May study session and then act upon that in May. The timeliness of it, obviously, is rounding out this school year and setting our budget for approval in June, and then certainly, we hit the ground running July 1st with our new fiscal budget. So from a timestamp, we're really kind of nearing the tail end of the window in budget development process, so.
Can I, I just want to clarify, I didn't understand, so the Transportation drivers were looked at by Evergreen?
They were included in that population, and I think based on the comments that were shared this evening, and as many of you took notes, I noted really the focal point on that beginning rate of pay as they shared some of the data in surrounding districts. So not only looking at that, but also looking at some of their other concerns as you're able to look at it in its totality. Anything to add in that respect on the Evergreen study, Dr. Vogelar?
No, I mean, there's obviously two components to this. One is what we can afford to implement, right? That's the ceiling, the $375,000. And then the recommendations from Evergreen on which positions were recommended for a change in salary grade placement.
Right.
And so I think a lot of the concerns that were raised is that Evergreen did not come back with a recommendation that drivers be changed to a higher pay grade, and that movement, when implemented, would be roughly around a very similar rate of pay than as what it is currently. So that was the recommendation from, in terms of implementation, under that $375,000 cap, there were some positions within Transportation that were addressed, Transportation Mechanic, for example, Transportation Trainer, that were recommended for movement, but the driver rate of pay was not included in a recommendation for increase.
Is there something we can talk about at the study session? If we wouldn't approve this, can we then bring it up to the study session and adjust if we need to in the month? If we choose to do that, I'm not saying we choose to do that, but I'm just.
Certainly something to be able to revisit. The only item I would make mention of is as you look at the revenue projections as we did back in March, and again, you get better data each month as you roll in in that process of developing a budget. You're constrained by so much as to what you're hearing from both the local revenue stream, but then also the state revenue stream. So we may have more information to share with you on the revenue front at that point, along with looking at additional study of the transportation scales.
And we know that we had to make some tough decisions about which positions to prioritize.
And it is. It's a matter of prioritizing with the hope being, as we've shared along, to be able to rectify over time the positions identified by the Evergreen study. So it'd be great to be able to, you know, take it all on in one fell swoop, but at the same time, being able to kind of piecemeal it out and prioritize, I think, has really been the focal point.
We're significantly behind the market in some positions.
In some areas, and then in other areas, we find ourselves that we're competitive or if anything exceed, so.
I move the board adopt the 2015-16 salary recommendations and compensation plans presented.
Is there a second?
Any additional conversation before?
The only comment I would have is that what I heard you say is that we will revisit this one.
Yeah, and I can connect with board officers, newly elected board officers, as far as developing that for the agenda for a study session.
Sandra?
Angie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm not going to change that order.
Not yet.
All right, next up is the district calendar for 2015 and 16.
This is an informational item in that we had our formal hearing in terms of setting our district's calendar earlier this year. We did have an item, have an item that was brought up in respect to work calendars and reflecting that as well, so I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Vogelar. This is solely an informational or an update item for the board.
Yeah, no impact to student contact time or start dates for students, but the returning teachers work 190-day work year. That's the length of the contract year for a returning teacher. To fit 190 days into the academic calendar, a day had to be placed somewhere in that academic window, and we met with Team Liberty to kind of say, you know, as a group, where would be the best place to put that, and it was unanimous, including the plan, to create returning teachers have four days to prepare for the start of the school year, and so this would allow for five days beginning of the school year. So it's no additional days, it's still 190-day work calendar for new teachers, 186-day for returning teachers, it's just five days before the start of students versus four days, which is what it's been historically.
And what we will indicate on the calendar is just a revision related to that specifically, so no other changes than that.
So do teachers still come back on the 11th? Is that date correct on here?
On what Sandra uploaded is correct, and it's a day earlier than what was originally on that.
It had previously indicated, I believe, the 12th, Sandra, prior to that.
First day for students is still the 18th.
Right.
So it's just five days before.
No change there.
And new teacher induction is still a four-day venture, but if you're moving, you know, returning teachers up one day, then you are moving the four-day window for new teacher induction up one day as well.
Correct.
All right. New business, first topic is finance resolution.
We do have two items for new business, and these are presented for first read, so if you take the opportunity over the course of the next several weeks to review that and forward questions or comments to us, that would be appreciated, and then we'll circle back around at our monthly meeting in May for approval of both the finance resolution and then the additional contract that's presented to you this evening. That's those two items.
So that takes care of both 9.01 and 9.02?
Yeah.
Okay. Then report from the Administration, Academic Services is up first.
I think Dr. Coram will be presenting that.
Well, it sounds like it's a day of celebrations, and we have several of that through Academic Services as well. First of all, we have, I spoke in the fall about Clarity Bright Bites, so that is the survey that is going out regarding technology in our district that is going out to students, staff, and parents. So we have, we're looking for a statistical significance so we can compare our data from the fall, and we are there primarily across the district, too. So we're excited to share that information with you as it becomes available to us. Couple other exciting pieces is on April 28th, that will be our first ACT, that will be the ACT test day for our high schools. So again, that's April 28th, and that's in your board report as well. We have also, in starting with testing, we've started with our elementary testing today, so that has gone very well, but we will be continuing testing for third through fifth graders for the MAP test, and we certainly appreciate Christopher Hand and all of the work that his group and some of our administrative assistants have done to prepare, along with technology, for this new rollout of our MAP testing. A couple other exciting notes for us, for our secondary for middle schools, Discovery, Heritage, Liberty High School, and Liberty North, all of their student councils were recognized by the Missouri Association of Student Councils, so all four were actually awarded the Gold Award for their involvement. And then at Heritage, we have a newly special award for Pam Folen, their advisor, and she will be representing six other states as one of the three, one of three representatives for student council representative at a national level. So we're excited for that. Did I miss anything? Okay. That was last-minute information for you, so that was not in your board packet. The other exciting piece that we have is last Saturday, parents and teachers at our Early Childhood Center had a block day and Festival of Blocks, and they had a preview one evening, and it was a really good turnout for that weekend and some excellent work from our staff to prepare families for the Festival of Blocks. Any other questions that I can answer for you?
Thank you. Cindy, you're racing up to the podium to talk about the finance report.
Racing is good work. Moving gingerly to the podium. Just glad to be able to stand on two legs. I will briefly just go over the items in the finance memo that I wrote for you. Budget fund balance, 18.64, we seem to be hovering right around that level, which I am very happy about. As I've said in the past, these last few months can change that drastically, but we hope that won't be the case, don't anticipate that will be the case. I wanted to comment briefly also on that finance resolution, that that is just a matter of internal control. When we have a bond that is issued, there is a governmental form, AD 38G, that we fill out regarding tax-exempt issues, and there's a question on that that asks if the district has written internal control procedures that maintain that we ensure that our post issuance compliance is under control. And by having that box checked, that may prevent an audit of a bond issue, and it's just another way to have a best practice in place for the district. So it's merely just an internal control piece, so wanted to let you know about that. In anticipation of seeing the preliminary budget next month, last month we talked about revenues, this month we're going to spend a little bit of time on expenditures. So I prepared a PowerPoint for you again, I'll try and be pretty brief. I'll try and be pretty brief. This is a picture that represents the whole budget, expenditure budget, including debt, capital, and the operating side. Operating side consists of salaries and benefits, supplies and energy, and purchase services, with capital and debt each being their own other piece. And that's the breakdown of the percent that each of them owns. And then you move on to the operating expenditure budget, and obviously, it's the biggest piece of the whole budget. Salaries and benefits are eighty, almost eighty-one percent. Purchase services are eight point two-three, and supplies and energy are almost eleven percent of the operating budget. So that's the biggest piece. In the operating budget, we have salary and benefit assumptions, which you will see represented in the piece that you voted on for the compensation package. That included the step increase, the half step, the horizontal movement, the Evergreen study. And those were all represented by the figures you see. And then the other piece to that is we add FTE every year to meet the enrollment increasing needs. Next year, we've budgeted four twelve, and we try, using the demographers' data, to anticipate what those needs will be. It doesn't always work out to be exactly that with the fluctuating class sizes, but we've done pretty well at hitting the mark on that. And we take a median salary in the benefit package and anticipate what the cost, and again, that's the best guess with the information we have at the time, and we anticipate that's going to be about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The salaries in total represent sixty-two point seven percent of the operating budget. And you will see in my information, I have also attached for you an operating projection that shows these items flowing through all the way out to 2021, maintaining an eighteen percent or greater fund balance, which is where we want to stay to ensure that we do not have to borrow in the months of November and December to meet payroll. That's the percentage you have deemed we want to maintain. And that's how we determine what we could do with Evergreen and where we could go implementing all of these changes that Team, the Team Liberty process came up with. So if you take a look at that, you will see those figures flowing all the way through and that we have done as you have asked. So if you have any questions as you take a look at that in the next week, please let me know what you would like more information about. For the benefit assumptions, Team Liberty will be able to pay up to nine point four percent of an increase for the half of the year that the next year covers for medical, dental, and vision. Word on, the last word we had is we may experience that, if not a greater percent increase. We've been very fortunate in the past that we have experienced a very low increase in our benefit costs. That may be coming to a close, so that may present us some challenges next year. But we have budgeted the full amount that we can absorb based on the Team Liberty process. And we think that'll be about four hundred and ten thousand dollars. Retirement contributions for certificated staff and non-certificated staff have remained constant since FY thirteen. That's all dependent upon how their investments go and how many teachers retire. So we always anticipate it's going to stay the same, but they will let us know if it doesn't. It's been pretty good that it's been stable since FY thirteen. That could cost us, you know, quite a bit if it decide, if they decide they need to hike that as well. The benefits are eighteen point one, six percent of the operating budget. So through the projection and Team Liberty process, this takes up the biggest chunk between salary and benefits of the operating budget. So I would appreciate it if you'd take a look at that document and make sure you are fully aware of how we do that process. The next category is supplies, and I've just listed a few of the things that that includes. We budget for supplies based on past history. We account for student growth, and we also account for any rising costs that we know of for certain on the cost of the goods and services. So really, past history is the most important thing we use when budgeting for supplies. Same would go for purchase services. I've listed here what some of them are. Past history, purchase services are a little more difficult because of the tuition to other districts and the contracted travel. That really is dependent upon what kind of student enrolls in our district and what their needs are. That fluctuates so much from year to year, and that comes with a great cost often when we have to transport them out of district and pay their tuition. But once again, past history usually dictates how we budget for services as well. So that comprises the operating accounts. Then we go to capital expenditures. And things that are in the capital budget are the building renovations, equipment purchases, our lease payments, and technology. Building equipment and technology go through a capital budgeting process where managers submit their capital requests, and Steve Anderson and his staff go through the process of ranking those requests. And then we know what we can afford out of the budget, and then we will fulfill those requests, and the rest of them are carried over to the next year, and the list is grown and reprioritized again. And so we just keep that process flowing and continually keeping that list up to date. Energy lease and lease participation certificates are budgeted on payment schedules, so we know exactly what to expect in those, for those. And they are seven percent of the total budget. Debt service is finally where we pay off our principal interest payments. It's estimated at ten million dollars this year. At the end of fourteen fifteen, our outstanding debt will be one hundred and thirteen point three million dollars. We have made with our refundings some pretty good dents in that budget over the last few years, so, and it is also seven percent of the budget. And that's it. Do you have any questions about expenditures and how we go about that process?
Do we have comparisons to other districts on where their percentages lie? Do we know how much we, X percent of our budget is for purchase services, X percent is for debt?
I've seen, I can try to get some of that. Hearing from our auditors, I know salaries and benefits were right in line. Most people do spend about seventy to eighty percent.
Usually in that seventy to eighty percent range.
I have a closer value, but yeah, I'm looking at things more like purchase services and things like that.
What you can do within that is take your annual secretary of the board report for our district and pull some comparisons from all other districts. So you can literally do that line item by line item, but then that also captures it by Fund One, Two, Three, and Four. So if you were curious as to capital expenditures, you could draw that for all five hundred and twenty-three districts based on your annual secretary of the board report. So it is available via DESI.
Would you like to see that?
I was going to ask him when he said, "You could do that," what did he mean by that?
We can do all five hundred and twenty-three, or we could do half of that.
Would you like to see our comparables?
Yeah.
And it may be worth doing just in the metro area.
It would be interesting to see the research gear groups that we look at.
Sure. You can do that.
I think our debt will be higher because of, we know where we're at relative expenses-wise. We understand why the differences are making sense, but...
And keep in mind, we do that on the academic performance piece in terms of knowing where we fall.
Right.
So those comparisons can be done on the finance standpoint as well. Couple that with, as we look at our employee base and, you know, the number of people that we serve in terms of students compared to the number of staff that we have. So all of that's readily available via the web portal that DESI provides.
I'd be glad to gather some of that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Operations report? Nope, sorry. Human Resources report. You're right. Bob's ready.
It's been a tradition to skip the operations report.
That's true.
President, we're getting you capable.
It's not just me.
Yes, we posted a couple reports. One is our current student enrollment numbers that we post every month, and you see our student population. And then the HR report accompanies that. What I want to highlight from the HR report is the wellness screenings. This is the season when we are providing opportunities for our employees who receive benefits to have the convenience of an onsite wellness screening and health risk assessment opportunity. We are about, a little over a third of the way completed with that, and about a third of the way completed in terms of participant numbers as well. We've added some additional sites. I talked with our wellness coordinator, and we're very encouraged by seeing this number, although four hundred and seventy-eight individuals is still a good distance away from all of our eligible employees that we want to see participate in our wellness screening. So we'll keep, keep the information out there in front of our employees in the hopes that they will participate. All employees, of course, may also participate through their own doctor, through well visits, and so that is available as well. We don't get that data in the same way, so it's hard to assess exactly how many employees have participated in a wellness screening of some type. I have an update on there about our positions. Right now, it's looking like we're going to have a new teacher induction class of around forty individuals, which is small in comparison years. We're still early in the hiring season, so that can change a little bit, but that's where we are right now. I've included a Team Liberty update there for your perusal as well. Team Liberty has wrapped up for the year. We normally do have a final meeting in May, but we decided that because that meeting does require that we pull teachers out of the classroom, and May is not the best time of year to pull teachers out of the classroom, that we would not have that meeting unless we had to. They wrapped up their work efficiently in April, and so we canceled the May meeting. The summary of that meeting is included there. The final two notes of the HR report is regarding RFPs for, request for proposals for different services. One is for a brokerage service. Our current brokerage service expires on May thirty-first. That's with Holmes Murphy. So we have an RFP out there, and the timeline's included in that report. And then we're doing a cost-benefit analysis of whether we should in-source or outsource our substitute services. And as part of that, obviously, we put out a request for proposal to just see what the costs of that would look like, and we're engaged in that conversation now and the timeline for getting that data gathered and assessed is included in the report as well. Unless there's any questions, that's the HR report for this evening. Thank you.
Now operate.
I'll just draw out a few items from the monthly report. Briefly, as relates to construction, really no significant changes to the last report from last month in terms of schedule. We're looking at the end of May for Liberty North and late July, early August for Liberty High. In addition to that, I was going to mention, talk about the capital plan briefly. We're getting very close to finalizing that, too, and we'll present that here in the next week or two. But did want to give you heads up as you're seeing some items come through the bidding process that we're starting to line up some of the work that we anticipate will most likely happen, just that you're aware that that's happening at the same time, but for, obviously for time constraints, since much of the work takes place in the summer, we wanted to get that lined up. The last item I would draw attention to is that in August, August seventh and August thirteenth, the school district is doing a district-wide active shooter drill. All employees will be participating, and we're kind of working through some of the details on that right now. I know the board's talked about that in past conversations and meetings. Quite the undertaking, as I'm sure you can imagine, but we'll plan on doing that August seventh, and then also two more sessions on August thirteenth. That's all I have.
Questions for Steve? Superintendent's report, Jeremy.
You have my information, but also wanted to add, as Dr. Coram shared, it is, the end of year brings about a time of celebration. And so last week was kind of our marathon week, beginning Monday with academic achievement awards for our high school-level kids at both Liberty North and Liberty High School, followed by two evenings, Tuesday evening and Thursday evening, with our Hope Award celebrations, in part sponsored by the foundation, so appreciate their efforts. It also included a couple of recognitions for the adults among us, and that being our PTA volunteers through distinguished service awards, along with our Teacher of the Year recognition. So it truly is a time of celebration in that even tomorrow night, we're looking at attending several of us the Northland Regional Chamber of Commerce Excellence in Education banquet and recognizing our LPS employees for their efforts on behalf of kids. Later on, we do capture a number of upcoming events and kind of rounding out that celebration kind of area as we wrap up the school year and celebrate with our graduating seniors. On the governance front, a couple of MSBA items. You should have received a board self-evaluation document from the Missouri School Boards Association. Appreciate your attention to that and completion. This evening, the regional meeting for Region Four is being held. None of us are in attendance, which means that we will need to likely look at an alternative date and location to be able to attend. And so we'll try to put that out for you all to look and see if you're available for those evenings. I know there's one later in April, as well as the first week or so in May, in that if some are interested in attending, we'll look to carpool to that. On the academic front, I want to draw attention that this week kind of leads us off into the assessment season as it relates to MAP assessment and, of course, exams, which were administered later on in May, the upcoming administration of the ACT. This year comes with a lot of changes, not only in the formatting of the assessment at the third through eighth grade level, but also the implementation in that it requires a tremendous amount of technology. And so appreciate Academic Services team, as well as Christopher Hand, leading point in that respect. And so we had our first day of administration today at Alexander Donafin with other schools coming online later this week as well. And so we're off and running. And thus far, appreciate all the front-loading and the front work that's occurred in respect to that administration. We're off and running in respect to that. Another item that really played out today at the state level was with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, hearing from work groups centered in and around the Missouri learning standards. If you'll recall, that was put into movement by House Bill fourteen ninety. I think we pushed some information to you earlier in a Friday update. Appreciate Academic Services putting that together in that this was the second event today at the state board level in hearing public comment as well as progress toward the work groups and what's going on there. To give you an idea as to the timeframe, it's required, as per part of House Bill fourteen ninety, that these work groups conclude their work no later than October of 2015, with whatever changes that are put forward for approval by the State Board of Education to take effect a year later in the 2016-2017 school year. So the hope being at the state level that they're able to conclude their work successfully, adopt the revised Missouri learning standards, and then allow for districts to continue the process of implementation of whatever these new standards look like. It's important to note that as the standards were revised from the previous set to the sitting set or the current set that we have, Liberty Public Schools has already been in the process of that matriculation. And so we feel like we are in a great place as it relates to transitioning to these new standards, whatever they look like as the Missouri learning standards. The administration of the assessment this year creates that baseline year for us, and that will look to analyze our performance and be able to build upon that as the years progress. The last item I wanted to keep you informed of is our continued process in and around the topics related to student well-being. And as we continue that this spring, we're in the planning phases of re-engaging the BEST committee, along with our ongoing efforts in play by the Liberty Alliance for Youth. We've been coordinating with the previous BEST committee that was overseen by Mrs. Gossett and Dr. Hammond to pick up where they left off last year, conjoin those efforts with LAFFY and Moving Ahead. And so we're soliciting individuals interested in serving on this committee structure and have a pretty good list thus far, and then we'll be working on identifying a date later this spring, as well as pushing out invitations for those interested in participating. Had a great meeting, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Gossett, and myself, with representatives from the Liberty Parent Action Network, couple of which are, one of which are here this evening, in how to engage in these critical areas moving forward. Appreciate Ms. Erdman being here this evening. Included in that conversation was Ann Unch, as well as Amanda Unch, and really had about an hour-long conversation about their thoughts in how they can not only support families around these critical areas, but then also support the district in how we can work together and collaborate around the issues related to student well-being. So more to come on those endeavors as we collaborate with this group. In addition, we provided an update of activities that the district has played, had in place via Friday updates and kind of the work around that. I wanted to draw your attention to one in particular that's coming up, and we've pushed this flyer out to you. It's entitled "Sticks and Stones," which is a presentation of a pretty powerful video around the topic of bullying. It will be followed by a resource panel that will consist of myself, district counselor, an adolescent therapist from outside the district, Clay County Sheriff, as well as identifying a student to serve on that resource panel. So we're looking forward to an important, at times heavy, but certainly a critical conversation in engaging our community on that note. The other piece is really just taking stock of the work that we do in and around our bully prevention efforts. So earlier in March, we distributed a survey to all of our district schools, including administrators and counselors, to capture an inventory of the work that we do in and around bullying, from prevention efforts to response efforts, and have a pretty lengthy inventory that we've captured thus far. Certainly something that we may want to kind of dive into later on in the study session just to see if there are any gaps that we feel are available or that are present, along with working with our committee around trying to fill perhaps some of those gaps. So that concludes the items under my superintendent's report.
Questions for Jeremy on? Topics he addressed.
Upcoming meetings, I believe that's our next topic. We have a number of things coming up over the coming two months, busy end of school year activities. Note the baccalaureate commencement times, have you all there for all of those events? And the board meetings and managing are listed as well. Anything else that we need to have on here?
We're working on honing in on a ideal June retreat date for seven board members to be present, so that is still in the works.
What was that, I'm sorry?
We're identifying an ideal date in which every board member can be present in June for our June retreat. So that is hard to do, but we'll, we'll get as close as we can and it is yet to be determined.
Here, our June board meeting is because of budget pushed out to the fourth Monday, correct? That's the reason that's fourth Monday? Okay.
So all those of you can build your schedule around this meeting on the third. There are a few.
I do.
All right. Board committee reports. Any board committees that we need to report back on this month?
Do you have a finance committee still being the Wednesday prior to Monday? What's that?
Monday, they met last Monday.
We'll use it the second Monday tomorrow.
Okay. We're at the point where we do board remarks. Jeremy touched on a couple of things. I was fortunate enough to attend. A couple of the other board members attended the Teacher of the Year presentation last week. And then the support person I was not able to attend the couple of weeks before that was really amazed by some of the people that we have in this district who are taking care of the hard work of educating our young people. And the stories I heard about how these people create relationships and how they've thought differently about how do we engage kids who need to engage in different ways, it was pretty inspiring, so. Any other remarks people have before we close out today?
I just have something to add on to what you just said. It's interesting to me that when I talk to Teacher of the Years, which is where I was, that when I say congratulations to them, they say, "I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the people I work with." And my peers are equally deserving, almost two, two or one, they had that message. So I just don't, it's a lot about how people collaborate.
Absolutely.
Just a quick remark. Monday night was the academics banquet, the academics world banquet. I think it's the only time in our district where both schools come together for a single ceremony. It's one of my favorite ceremonies of the year because we've got Liberty North and Liberty High in the same place celebrating the same things. And there was another indication of that a couple of weeks ago. Brian Hartman at Liberty North, choir director at Liberty North, was invited to sing the National Anthem before all of the state final basketball games in Columbia a few weeks ago. And the very last game of the day, the Liberty Blue Jay girls were playing in a game, in their finals game or semifinals game, I'm not sure which. And the Liberty North choir changed out of their navy and gold and changed into royal blue and white in honor of their crosstown rivals. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but we've got a rivalry building here in town, which is a very healthy rivalry, but we've also got good leaders, good role models, and good kids who are supporting one another across this district. And I just wanted to say a public thank you to that group and to Brian for doing that.
All right. Good stuff. But I think we're ready to adjourn.
Want a motion?
I would like a motion.
I move your turn. I don't know what it's written as, but that's my motion.
Do we have a second? Sandra?
Angie?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Scott?
Thank you all.